Good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and close the meeting in order at this time. Please turn off cell phones, electronic devices to off or vibrate at this time. Mr. Bob McDaniel, will you please leave us in our prayer and place of seating, please?
If we thought that maybe all of us, and all of us, inject our selves into Matthew, and says, "You are the light of the world." And a town built on a hill cannot be hidden. A lamp put on the table cannot have a pot put over it, but be put on a stand so that the light will shine for everyone in the house to see. So it is with us, Heavenly Father. We pray that Cugeenian Matthew that will let our light shine before men so that they don't owe us for our good works, and so that we'll glorify our Father who is in heaven. So, we pray that Ballenger can be that proverbial town on the hill, based on the foundation of positive things, progressive things, and we pray that we'll have a role in all of those. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where we stand, one nation of your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bob. All right. Consider approval of the minutes of 18th, 2019, the evening. Everybody had time to review these. Any changes, corrections?
On, it's just a, I guess I, um, on the second page, bottom line, it should be sell F D L L.
All right. Most of the day except the minutes that presented with.
So moved.
Off the page. Okay. Off the page, say aye. Aye. Thank you, thank you. All right. Any citizen who desires to address City Council on a matter not included on the agenda may do so at this time. For the Open Minutes Act, the City Council may not deliberate on items presented under the agenda item. Offered presentations are subject to a five-minute time limit. Is anyone present this evening that needs to speak that's on the agenda?
Yes.
That has just opened up.
Uh, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Please.
Uh, yes, I was just wanting to, uh, hopefully get the 5K, Justin Mallard, Memorial 5K blessed off on, coming up, on Memorial Day, uh, coming up, May 27th. Uh, we're going to be using the same route that we've used the last two years, so we don't need any road closures or, uh, anything of that nature. Uh, just want everybody to be aware that it's going to be going on, and everybody to be okay that it's going to be happening.
This is the same one that you've done last year?
Yes, sir. Same one we've done the last few years. We're going to be starting at the high school parking lot, ending at the high school parking lot, coming down, wrapping around by the football stadium, coming up, pastry.
Okay. And Keith, you're good with the routes and everything?
Yeah, we never had a problem.
Okay. Do we need to put this on the next meeting as far as on the agenda for approval?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that, but we do have to have it on the agenda, so we'll have that on the next meeting.
I asked her to be on the agenda, it just didn't make it.
Okay. Sorry. That was my fault. Either way, we'll still be on the agenda. April 27th, how's that? The next meeting will be on October, and we'll still be, we'll still be here.
Yes, sir.
To your pardon.
Okay.
All right, then you don't have to come to that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Does anybody else have any comments or anything to say? Yes, ma'am.
You're not, it's just.
Really? I was asked to get prices together for a splash pad in the park. I've got two different types. One is a freshwater, one is a circulation, three different sizes, 500 square feet, 750, and 1,000. I just wanted to get that to the right people. Don't lose it, because I sent them about two copies, so they need more.
Is the park board doing something like this?
It's just something that Tommy and Moore has, a couple of times.
Couple of times?
Mm-hmm.
Good.
And he asked me to go get pricing on it. Um, I think would be a big asset for the parking for Ballenger. It's expensive. But I checked today, and I think winners has their cool feeling with water. I don't know when their projected date to be open is, but I know we've got a lot of the local pams that bring their kids here for field trips and stuff, and I think a splash pad would just be an added extra feel.
It would.
And also, Tommy, do you know if the washers in volleyball? Is it going to be ready?
Yes, it will be ready.
Anyway, that's all I had, is to get those prices.
That's my, appreciate you. Well, good evening. All right. Does anybody else have any comments or anything else? It's the time to verbalize if you're not on the agenda. All right. All right. City Council may consider discussing authorized staff to publish notice for public hearing on a petition to oppose the following unopened street. Washington, now 13th Street, from 5th Street, now Avenue E through 6th Street, between Block 1, Blocks 1 through 6, to the southwest, and Block 11 of the Reader Edition.
Well, we've had an individual who owns a lot on, uh, on, what's, what's the site? They're using some old terminology here. Washington Street, which is now.
Oh, I know where this is.
Yeah, 13th. Uh, he had also requested, uh, here while back to close the alleyway, and we got Pat, Pat, uh, told him to petition the people around him. Uh, he wasn't able to get that petition signed by everybody, so now he's wanting to come in and, uh, close part of what would be 13th Street. Do you know Brandon Davis' move?
I know exactly.
Yeah, it's right beside Brandon Davis' house.
Does this continue on the Rick Sonnenberg? Perfect. It heads over there the way. That goes behind, that goes behind you.
Okay, okay. Right. So, uh, currently, uh, this property would go, if, if we chose to vote to close this road, uh, Brandon Davis would get half the street, and, uh, Mr. Daband would get the other half.
The alley.
Well, this is the actual street.
Well, it's always, oh, continue with.
Right. The 13th Street.
Right.
And, uh, if you look in the picture there, uh, this is Brandon Davis's house, and the road would go just straight on, I guess, basically where that tree is. Then we just, uh, now, issues with this is, uh, there's quite a bit of property back there behind Brandon's house, and at any point in the future, if he sells his house, and someone wishes to build additional properties back there, uh, we would need the street. That's the problem.
I know.
Because it's planted all that way.
Yes.
I'm going to ask a question. How far back does that go? Because doesn't Rick Sonnenberg own the land then from his house all the way back to 13th?
Yes, he would.
So that street would cut through his property if we opened it up?
It, well, you, this is, you're talking about a block here, because he would be on the next block.
Okay, well, that's what I'm asking. How far?
See.
Because there's not a street on the other side of that house.
Right, there's not a, there's not a cross-section street.
But if you can get me that street right there where it is, you're going to have traffic right outside his window.
Right. Now, I mean, and again.
I know, but he talked about if he did.
Uh, if Rick Sonnenberg decides to sell his property, and the owner decides to subdivide it as well, again, we would need that street.
And then again, if you just keep going straight on down.
You run into the high school.
Then, uh, Jim Weatherby owns the rest of the property from the 11th Street to 13th Street. You'd have to cut through his place, and you're going to have to cut across a pond.
Right.
And move his house to pump out everything else.
Right, right.
Very true.
I mean, he's only asking for a block, so we're not proposing that we're going to build a road.
Yeah, but you're talking about subdividing and everything, and definitely best to run into building, but you could also divide that property.
That's correct.
Apparently, our is subdivided, yes, it looks like.
Well, these, these are, this is how it was planted, but technically what it is, this, this is one house here.
And this would have.
Yes, and then this would supposedly close 13th Street, Washington.
So that's what you're looking at there, that this is.
Yes.
That would be this credit.
Right. Now, this, this property here is owned by an individual, probably a three-fourth of the yield. In fact, it's probably the sole Washington. And this is another individual, he owns the whole thing. And, and it just continues all the way to the high street. So that's what we're looking at. Yes. Now, we have water service through here, and through here. Now, on this side, we have a, we have a water line that comes through the property, across the road. Okay. And it's going into this part.
That's true.
So.
What is the reasoning behind their wanting to close? I guess that's.
Mr. Daband owns, owns the property. The, the registry. Yes. And because it's not, uh, an actual story, he would like to go ahead and take that property back. It would make his property a mixture. Figure. Now, he's running to opposition on the, on the left side of this property with the alley. He wouldn't be able to get the, the, uh, petition signed by Mr. Dixon, which is right beside Mr. Moore.
If I might.
Right. Yes, sir.
If I might say something. If you continued on right there where the yield sign is, that segment there would be about 300 feet, um, you know, if you built the street in there, it would be about 300 feet, would be one block. My recommendation would be, due to possible future development, that we're going to close the street, leave it there. The alley over there, if we closed that alley, that would leave the back of Clay Dixon's house limoing. And so my recommendation would be not to close that, just leave that route.
Yeah, he couldn't get there, son.
So.
Well, Clay doesn't live there anymore.
Well, whoever.
Did he try to?
Whoever.
He said whoever was, wouldn't sign.
But Tom has a footnote towards Steve says, and what Rick says. Rick owns all the way back to 13th. Or if he wanted to subdivide that back property of his and build houses there, this portion of 13th to be closed, you know, which would affect him if, in the future, if he were to set it. And it would affect access to those homes, if I said, so, yes, but I agree with what Steve said. Okay.
But does the proposed 13th, does it even go through Sonnenberg's? I don't think it goes.
Not 13th.
12th. The proposed 12th, does it go through Sonnenberg's?
It doesn't go up that far.
I don't think it does. So it would.
They probably go one block, 300 feet.
Technically, well, are you saying Sonnenberg's is in that 300 feet?
No, probably not.
Right. Technically, this is not a road at the moment.
Right.
Still included, it looks as if it's in Brandon Davis's yard.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, now, if the city needed to, we would build a road, because that's the way it was planted back in 1905.
Uh-huh.
Okay, so we would just continue with this road.
Right.
Now, Rick Sonnenberg would be the same way. And even if we did this block, there may not be a need to have that road carried on, you know, so, I mean, we would just go 300 feet, stop.
Yeah, I think it always be you that you build your driveway, a lot, a lot of it uses.
Well, now we all saw the water line that runs across that 12th Street grid.
Uh, it runs.
Across the grid.
Yes, it does.
This is just a, not, it's not on here to close tonight, it's just to call a public hearing if you want to do it. If you don't want to do it, we don't have to do it. And, uh, if you don't want to do it, I'd say just tell him you don't, because you have to spend some money, get a survey, and, and public hearing fees, and all that.
So Keith, you haven't had the public hearing because you couldn't get the petition signed?
No, our resolution requires a public hearing.
This is not the first time this is.
I've had people want to buy that little spot there, but.
Why that? To buy this?
Yeah, I think Walter's daughter.
Mr. Y, you said it.
Yeah, she's there.
That's the, behind Jonathan's and between Mr. Davis.
Right.
But she just stayed in one side. I, it's not going to affect Sonnenberg's, um, I don't know. That's a problem.
What do you think, Phil?
You know, it's, I guess the question is, will it ever be developed beyond? That's really the only problem. I guess it, is there any development beyond that right now?
There's a lot of buckets.
Could be.
Could be. From, from that road, where the tree is, back to those houses back there, if you go straight on back there, all that is pink.
And the high schools behind there, too?
Yeah.
So that, I mean, that's going to be desirable, or anything, for a school up there.
Well, if it is, and then, like I say, you know, it may not be this year, the next year, probably in five years, if they sell that property and somebody buys it and subdivides it, the, the need for the road would be there.
Well, Jim Weatherby's place is the same way. He owns all that property, always that 13th, this and this, where his house is. It is up for sale right now.
But, you know, the, the current tenants of whatever property that is have use of that property, you know?
Oh, well, yeah, sure.
At, at the moment.
Well, I'm saying if they sell it, and they decide to subdivide it or something, it would hold.
Right, then, you know, if, I mean, at this point, we could still put our property, you know, if, if they subdivide it, then we could go ahead and push the road out as far as we need to. If we close it now and give the property back to the landowners, uh, we would have to reacquire it at some point in the future.
That's what it would be.
So, uh, personally, I tend to think we'll just leave it as is, you know?
Make a motion, Rick.
So, yeah. I was thinking, y'all were going to come forward to not have.
If there's no motion to call a public hearing, it just fails, so if there's no motion to call a public hearing, it fails.
So that's, public hearing failed, then?
Yeah, well, just.
There's no motion to call a public hearing, it just fails, so it's a negative. Is that what you're saying?
Yep.
Okay. So we discuss it, we don't agree to have a public hearing, so we move forward.
Amen.
All right. City Council may consider discussing authorized installation of a four-way stop sign on the corner of 13th Street and Pew Avenue. And this should be located at, there you go, the bridge.
Okay, where, where the dip was on 13th Street, uh, we've taken out the dip, and if you look, uh, well, I'm going to come up here, on, on the bottom left panel, you'll see the yield sign, and it's, it's set back quite a bit, uh, and, and then it curves out quite a bit as well. If we set a stop sign, we'll need to move it a, a lot closer to this road, because at the moment, people are stopping on, at the yield sign, and there's quite of a, a fence there.
Is that just all the way to the street, almost, in front?
Yes, it does. And, uh.
It reminds me about, probably about four, five feet, but when you pull up to that, when you're coming down Pew there, and you pull up to the, where the yield sign should be, uh, there's a few that couple cars parked around there that you can't see around any half, you know? So it makes a common danger to go across that intersection.
We, we've had several people come to us and so on, but it's also that they had near misses there.
Yeah, that's my aside, I would think that there's.
And when you have a near miss, that's the time you start addressing the problem, you know, before you actually have a, an accident or.
Well, is the dance report developing different, like, in the region?
Steve, have.
I actually think it is.
All right, council will discuss it. What is it now, Steve?
Bit more.
What'd you say?
I'd like to do it with.
Well, I'm going to say from the look, I already did set back, you said four to five feet, and that's a setback on both sides, isn't it?
Yeah, it's, it's set back a little bit.
All right, what, even, even. I'm saying usually the chief police brings traffic issues, and I have been included in it, in it.
Uh, I have been in all four directions. There is a issue with that yield sign being set all the way back on Pew, the one you pointed out. So either that yield sign needs to be moved up, or, you know, a, a sign needs to be moved up closer to the intersection. There is a blind spot, there are cars that park real close to that intersection anyways, because they're not marked, the curbs are not marked. I can see it being a hazard, that we had an accident, reportable accident in there? No. So, ever since we got the dip fixed, there has not been an accident there.
Would you endorse a four-way stop?
If there is nothing to be done with the fence, I, I have to look at it, I mean, if you put a four-way stop in there, you got trees that you need to cut down also, because you could not, you could, you would not be able to see a stop sign there. And you would have to make sure the curb is painted, where no one parks close to it, and, you know, I don't oppose, but yet, I don't, I think maybe a four-way stop may be too much.
What do you, what do you recommend?
What do you recommend?
Um, really? I mean, we try and look at moving that yield sign closer to the intersection, either that or redesigning the intersection to where, you know, all four areas can see each other. I mean, that's, I mean, I think four-way stop should be the last step you go to, but if you put a four-way stop on something that's everybody's used to, you know, it's going to be, it's going to be headaches.
Well, a four-way stop, I think, is taking the last step, when we haven't even taken steps prior to that. I mean, if we move the yield sign, like you said, and then we talk to the people that are parking so close to that and mark that curb or something, it's a setback from the parking of it, and give that an opportunity to try to do something before we go forward.
Because we're already having people that already come up to that speed dip, that used to be there, and they're already hit.
I, that still slows down.
Oh, I know, but that's what I'm saying, it might kind of slow it down, but if now you're going to put a stop sign in, then it's going to be streaky.
Yeah. You know? No, I agree.
I agree, too.
So, we should try to move the yield sign?
I would say, I would say move the yield sign.
Yes, having to do something with the truck.
Paint the curb.
Well, we, we're trying to say, what do we have to do with the truck?
If I had evidence, you know, we had accidents there, I would have them work that, but, yeah, I don't dare, not, not meant a reportable accident.
Just lots of near misses.
And no sign was your best.
Can we have, you want a little where it's painted up?
Yeah.
By the curb?
Yeah. Okay.
And is that, we could just paint the curb, or is there any kind?
Just, no, we, yeah.
Paint it and try to, or no parking, and try to keep them back a little bit, but it would just, you have to work the people off. All right. Have I a motion to modify the intersection of 13th and Pew Avenue, rather than a four-way, and, uh, move the yield sign and work on moving the parking back by, what'd you say, painting the curb?
A lot of people will, you know, observe the paint marks.
Right.
So, I mean, you know, there, there are cities where you have the red paint, oh, you know, I can't remember how many feet it is, like 20 feet from the stop sign.
Okay.
From the intersection, you know, so that way they're a clear path looking.
Right. So that was stripped.
Yeah, I don't know exactly what the code is, but, um, the city can do that.
Can I make that motion proposal, you say, I'm staying, do you?
Second. Oh, okay, you say aye. All right. Thank you, thank you, good to see you. All right. City Council may consider discussing accept the recommendation of the zoning and zoning board to approve various requests from Robert Harden, 300 line Baker Street, Lot 7, Block 8, Sunnyside Edition, Manuel Kinga Jr., 807 North Friday Street, Lot 2, Lot 6, Boden Edition.
We took the, I don't. We took these both before the D and Z meeting, and they approved both, uh, both where.
They approved both of them?
Yes.
The, the one for Mr. Harden was, uh, to move a, a manufactured home, they were, they were taking one out and putting one back in its spot, uh, down behind Stripes, in that area. And, uh, planning and zoning approved that. And the next one was a carport that, it was, I'm not going to say infringing our, our.
Well, they're not, they're not. They're going to violate the, uh, setback by about seven feet, uh, but it's still going to leave probably about 14 feet to, to the side, so there's plenty of room there.
And this is just a carport, is that it? And we went out to look at it, and, um, the way the house is constructed, uh, the owner of the house is, uh, I guess, has some disabilities.
Yeah, she has some disabilities on.
And, and, but this would, and that part of it, stay out of the rain, uh, and weather, so, but planning and zoning, it went before the board, and they also approved it.
Don't we have a zoning board of adjustment?
And is it, I don't know. Is it, what?
CBA. Do we have one? What, zoning board of adjustment? We do not. Well, planning zone typically cannot grant variances, that's got to be a zoning board of adjustment, but, I mean, not far away from they say that, I don't know any located, but that's not, they really only have roles to prove plans.
Always going.
Always do that. That may be right.
No. Let me table, we table this, let me take my hand.
I make a motion to adjourn. Attorney, a motion to adjourn. Second.
Well, on the, on the first one, for the manufactured home.
Yeah.
Can we approve that one, and then maybe table the second one?
What, what is the first variance?
It's, uh, we have a manufactured home currently in a flood zone.
Uh-huh.
Okay, they're moving that manufactured home out and putting in a new name.
So that's a variance to your floodplain requirement?
Yes.
That's a variance to the flood zone?
Yes.
Are they putting, in the, in the footprints of the old one?
Exactly.
Okay, kind of like Jesus Christ shirt.
So you can.
So, on the first one?
Yeah, I mean, I, that's really outside of apartment, if we have it in there, if they can grant variances to that, I mean, usually that is a, um, that would be a change to the building code, correct? And that's what your floodplain requirements, your building codes. So, that again, would be, you know, a ZDA type deal, but again, if your ordinance says that, I'd have to look at it and see, but, I mean, if you want to do it, you do it. I've been doing this this way all these years. Too soon. Well, it's not that you can't grant variance, it's just T and Z is, is not a variance body. They're a plat, they're apparently just to prove, prove the plan.
Well, can the council approve the variance?
Yeah, I think the council would be more of, of, you know, acting in that role, you either are waiving it, requirement, which is, well, you're probably waiving anything, just waiving a requirement.
Yes.
Um, and so, if you wanted to do that one, that might be better for the first one.
Okay, so.
And what's your second variance to report?
It was a, an addition on carport to, uh, house structure.
So what is the variance? Setback requirement. Setback requirement.
So, can we accept the variance?
Yeah, did the first one just say that you have to grant permission to, or grant the variance to put the manufactured home in there? So that would be allowed anyway. If you're putting a new one in, under the law, state law, we couldn't prevent them from putting it in, period. So, the manufacturer comes, there's a law that says if you put in a new one that's at least as big and newer, then if it was some large one and not in nature, you're allowed there. But if one was there, then you, you'd be, by law, can go in there.
There is a grand public comment, okay. So, I guess we would, you wanna do the one without the other one?
Yeah, I would do that, the manufacturer, just allow that.
Did that, Jordan, Kenner?
Yes.
You're Jordan?
Yeah, alright, motion to accept the recommendation of P and Z to allow Mr. Harden to replace their home at three oh nine Baker Street. And then, uh, we're gonna be a negative on Manuel Pena at this time.
For table.
Or table it for Mr. Pena at this time at eight oh seven North nine.
Should move.
Second?
Aye.
All papers say aye.
What is, what is the, uh, you know?
Well, we're, we're, we're gonna delay this decision. Uh, we're gonna have to do a pass and see how to proceed with the variance.
I just wanna check your ordinance to make sure. There should be a zoning board of adjustments under state law, which deals with variances, uh, any alterations or changes to decisions you make. Have to appeal it through that. Under state law, P and Z's are just, they have the authority to establish zoning ordinances, regulations, and that's it.
So, is that a, that's an appointed rule of the council?
Yes, sir, it'd be, it's, it's a different board.
Alright.
Wasn't the, didn't that kinda what the P and Z?
Well, if the, if the council has the, has the power to grant a variance. You know, I mean, there's a really a difference between Harden and Pena, getting to put the council.
We can proceed with the acceptance of the grants that have been agreed on by P and Z.
I mean, y'all can, and we could, if we did, we're gonna set up a whole board and get an ordinance and all that stuff for us, so if you want us to lay it there, you can.
You can demotion.
You're raising.
Uh?
You can raise him and make an act of.
Does everyone do?
Rick? We're kind of.
Well, we can rescind the.
Emotion, I can tell you.
The motion what we just did.
We're gonna have to set up something else. We do, it's you saying we're gonna have to go ahead and set up.
Well, the problem is, you're setting precedents. If you say this guy can do the carport, the next guy can't. I just hate to go there.
I'm not sure what you're saying, the next guy can't.
Well, the thing is, well, every, every situation gonna have a different.
Yeah, I don't know, maybe so. If, we're gonna have to set up a whole board and an ordinance, I mean, take them all off this.
Yeah, yeah, I know, no doubt.
And I mean, I mean, we're talking about carports.
And I, I have a problem with that, I just, once we don't get into it, we're gonna have to be making it, always making decisions, making new ordinances or new.
Well, no, you know, if, if we get, uh, we're gonna have, looks like we're gonna have to get another board and ordinance together anyway. Or amend our ordinance if our planning and zoning board has it in there, so. Now, were you just looking to review the ordinance?
Well, I, I, I mean, I want just to see what you got, I, I don't recall, if we don't have a ZBA. Planning and zoning, understood is a creature of state law, and, uh, and so we'd be limited under P and Z's authority down in. The first one, I'm not too worried about it, because that's really what, it really wasn't P and Z's provision first place. And when the ZBA is really a building code issue, that if anything, ZBA, if you had a ZBA, they would have paid it, but you don't think you have to. The second one is purely a variance to the zoning ordinance, and that's a ZBA, under state law issue.
Right.
So, I just, you know, again, I guess in the worst case scenario, somebody in the future could say, that was voided, because they didn't have the authority, and so they're more very, they challenge if they didn't have the authority to do it. But of course, we've got what, fifty years worth of variances granted by them bodies, so, uh, you know, said, I guess it's not any more risky than another fifty years worth, so, uh, that's what I'm saying today. It's like, I don't, I don't wanna upset the airport, I'm just telling you, we need to look at it, probably change our ordinance for the future, for sure.
Okay, good. So, my, may we rescind our.
Just, you could just rescind it and approve.
I'll rescind my motion, I'd like a motion to approve both, both variance requests from Mr. Harden and Mr. Pena.
I'll second.
All papers say aye?
Aye.
Okay, good. Alright, consider approval of building permits. We went so long with that, I didn't even know about it.
Okay, Mark and Danny McLaughlin, eight hundred north nine, wants to put in a metal storage building. And, uh, David Fuentes, according to Hamilton, wants to build a metal, uh, shed in lane two. And I've looked at these and everything for the.
Awesome, and these are in addition to our other two that we just did. A good.
Yeah.
No extra.
I'm going to motion, nobody accept these permanent applications?
No, I can ship.
All papers say aye.
Aye.
Fine, you go. Thank you, sir. Alright, City Council may consider discussing approved police activities, open report, please, sir.
Frank with a A-Rose, thirty-seven fourth, eleven accidents, two hundred and thirty-two, two hundred and twenty-three calls, service. Uh, and it was about seven, two citations, court costs or court fines, they have about seventy-six hundred dollars.
Is that on the thing? Thank you.
What? Of course.
That's fine.
That's not my depth, huh?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if they got. We got it up there.
Um, update on the grant information, we have received a letter from the COG stating they are, they recommended that we only get a third of our costs that we put in for the grant for the vehicles. Um, which is the highest amount that we, anybody got in this area, so, it's going through the attorney general's office for approval, for thirty thousand dollars for a vehicle. So, at least we got thirty thousand dollars if attorney general says yes, then we should be in that pretty soon. So I don't know how long it takes, a lot of time the attorney general approves everything, but, yeah, us and a few other counties or a few other entities only got thirty thousand dollars.
We should know by, was it October?
I think, I'll leave by October.
We should know sooner.
You know, as soon as they send it in, they'll look over everything, make sure everything's good, and then you say yes, so. No way, nobody ran over it, that's, that's, so good there, yeah. Made a good turn, had a chili pickoff, no one made it, so hasn't been chili, one of us sold, only got the face of all, so I think it sets in, and it's a taste of anything else. So, other than that, I think that's it. You have any questions, Collins, for us?
Right? Well, awesome, thank you, appreciate you.
I'll look, yes, if there's one.
Take your question.
Tim Mercer is a, um, full state-approved COVID worker officer. He passed his test last week, so he's approved, ready to go, ready to run around, so.
Awesome.
Oh, and.
I mean.
Need him, and, uh, Anthony Hertz will be graduating, um, May twenty-fifth, I believe, or that Thursday?
Twenty-four. Twenty-four, Friday.
The twenty-fourth, this Thursday, right?
No, it's Friday.
Twenty-third, Thursday.
Yeah, okay, he'll graduate the twenty-third, we'll be taking the test the twenty-fourth.
Okay, I thought the graduation ceremony was twenty-fourth.
No. Uh, if anybody wants to, uh, wants to enter anything, we'll be, they'll be on in your full year form, um, and we do a penny of that and everything there.
Where?
Uh, the M D Center.
M D Center.
Vintney's.
And that used to be the convention, down. Were you, I'm sure.
I'm sure.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, and, I mean, I have all the details at the office, if you want, I'll send it to y'all if y'all want us in.
You know what?
And, uh, like I said, well, he'll be in your form, he'll graduate, um, with balance or E D, and he'll get pinned, um, I think he wants, um, uh, somebody to pin him. So we'll put the badge on him and he'll take the test that next day, as long as he passes the state test, we'll hold it in the streets Saturday, so.
Chief, one thing, Archie started here about ten years ago, has had an opinion in front of council of new officers, and, you know, it's kind of a big way to introduce them to the council.
I mean, a lot of, we, you know, kind of represent, you know, new officers, it's better to progress than it has to go. I wonder if we can do that as well, so.
It'll be on video then? It'll be on video then?
Yeah.
Oh, alright.
I think that's it then.
You think so? Says you're gonna sit down if you want.
Probably.
One more.
Yeah, but no, I think that's it.
Two more?
Yeah, Carol knows the hell is.
So we're looking at him in here, first of eight, four of these. How long does it take him to grade that test?
Uh, he'll know probably, this is a few drives, and, I mean, as soon as he hits submit, they say yes, yeah, they get your name.
So, we'll know on the twenty-fifth of May, twenty-fourth of May?
Yeah, we'll know on the forty-fourth of May, and if he fails, I mean, if he fails, um, which, uh, he doesn't, um, I think he has, he retakes it within twenty-four hours. And then if he fails that again, I think he has to wait seventy-two hours, so.
Percentage is pretty low if they fail, so.
Yes, uh, for the San Antonio, I guess. Their, their, if he falls down or if he has a certain percentage of passing, pass fail, or else they'll shut, they'll shut you down.
Right.
If they have ninety percent pass rate.
Right, so. You expect him to pass the flying colors?
Yes.
Yes. So, in there?
Good.
Matt? Alright, thanks, sir. Here's the city minister, by the way, the D report, please, sir.
Well, it's been busy. Uh, we've had the ethnic festival, which was a really big success. Um, last week, well, last, that's last weekend, we had a funeral procession for a, uh, World War II sailor who had died during Pearl Harbor attack on Pearl Harbor in nineteen forty-one. Uh, so, you know, it's, we were getting busy, you know, last weekend, we handed out flags, we handed out over two hundred flags to the people downtown. Uh, we had water available and a snack, you know, we're trying to attract people, you know, for the procession, uh, I thought it was a really good turnout, and it was on Saturday, and, um.
It was a big turnout?
Yeah, it was, so, uh, but, yeah, we had a really good ethnic festival, uh, lots of people there, a lot of vendors reporting that. They were, uh, I would say on average, about a third busier than they had been in previous, so, um, uh, and we think it was a big success. And, uh, let's see, we've had a couple of projects we've been working on and following, uh, the Scout Hub renovations are complete. They, uh, finished, are finishing some of the last touches of, uh, like, you know, handles in the restroom for the, uh, the disabled. Yeah, the A D A, so, uh, we should be able to have a, uh, ribbon cut in there shortly. Uh, I'm not, hopefully as soon as next week, uh, maybe on Wednesday or Thursday. When should golf be involved?
Wednesday.
Thursday is.
Tuesday and Thursday. I gotta work around that.
Yeah. So, maybe a Wednesday, we'll look at that.
Appreciate it, cause the money should get in, bro.
Yeah. Uh, so, we're excited about the Scout Hub getting finished up, and our, here's a music. Uh, our mural project is complete, if you haven't been by, please take a look, it looks really good. Uh, the renovations on the fountain closet are about eighty-six, eighty percent complete. Uh, they're gonna come back, they had to stop for the ethnic festival, uh, they're gonna put an inside rock line in the, uh, in the fountain, so. And then, the state works one in the back wall, uh, extending. So, as you see here, we got a picture, it's, it's looking really good, it seemed to be a big hit, uh, during the ethnic festival, uh, so, we'll be finishing up. I heard from him today, he said, uh, he'd like to have everything possibly next week, depending on the rain, uh, so we're shooting for the end of the month to get completely finished with it. So, so it's looking really good. Uh, we're in the process of looking for better health insurance. Uh, currently, we have T M L, uh, Texas Municipal League Insurance. Uh, we approached a, uh, insurance consultant, uh, about six months ago. And we've been feeding information back and forth to him, uh, and he's found, uh, a really good insurance carrier, Blue Cross and Wood Shield, who's very, very competitive. And, uh, we've been talking to him and Neil, it seems like we could not be able to get, for the same cost, a very much improved, uh, insurance plan. And, uh, once we get all the details and everything together, uh, we're gonna, uh, let everybody know what we found. But basically, our goal is to be able to cover not just the employee, but their family as well, and, uh, with a minimum cost. And currently, to, to get the family on, on the insurance plan, it's a little pricey. Uh, our plan, our new plan, we provide two different, we have an HMO and a PPO. The HMO was half the price, so, an individual had to pay fifteen hundred dollars for his wife and children a month, every month. Uh, we're looking at about three or four hundred dollars.
Blue Cross H U O?
Yes, sir.
And it didn't take Blue Cross H U O. Isn't what you know that?
I understand.
And we have to seek competitive proposals, see proposals on insurance.
Right, right.
See, now you don't, because they're a pool.
Yeah, but they can be included in that pool, and so, and we have asked them for, uh, their pricing as well, they came back and wanted to. Readjust, so we will have competitive bids, so. Anyway, we're, we're still looking, and, but we are, uh, in the hunt for a better insurance period, so. Uh, our swimming pool was set to open the twenty-fifth of May, uh, we're all very excited about it, uh, we're having some, some changes, not, not everything big, just, um. We're gonna add a projector so we can have movie night, uh, Gary's kind of running some of that to, you know, run on the schedule, and, uh. So we're excited, it'll be open longer during the day, it'll be, uh, opened more often, and, uh, so, we think it'll be a big hit this year.
So we've been operating, you decided, if you are, somebody's helping you get?
We have, we have two managers, uh, two adult managers, and now swap shifts, and, uh, that way there's always an adult pair present to, you know, make sure that our high school kids are doing what they need to be. Uh, we, last week I met with, uh, Laura Brown, she is a sophomore in high school, and. And she's with the TMCN, and I'm not really sure exactly what that means, but...
Texas Midwest Community Network?
I think so, yeah. It's about a scholarship project at the City Park. Her proposal is to turn the current mini golf into a golf park. And I went down there and met with her. We talked about it, asked her to get a presentation together for the next meeting. She's a really good speaker, so we're looking forward to seeing her presentation. Then we can make a decision after we have her presentation.
But note to that, the ancient golf course should be taken up.
That is correct. They will, in our preliminary discussions, the current mini golf course will be...
Excavated.
Excavated. What's the past, or demolition? But we've taken it all up and they'd be in charge of setting up, I guess, an area for the dogs, you know, the grass and everything else, whatever you needed. It'll be an interesting presentation.
But the existing building will be left there?
And our preliminary plans, the existing building would be left there. I just don't see a need to take it down at this point.
So. Well, there may be a certain amount of supplies you're gonna need.
Yeah, we can all use it as storage building. I'll write down Clark, Mr. Brown, Mr. Johnson uses it as a, as a...
Breaker?
Breaker, yes. So keep my people all mixed up on my mind.
You were the mention, or you not the mention, pretty good.
I've got it on some extra notes.
Oh, okay.
I've got some that didn't make it to the meeting.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I was, our agenda was a little bit late this week. We were really busy on Thursday and Friday, and Claudia hounded me. And I didn't get it in, so it split right under the wire. So some of these points, they didn't actually make it. Last week, we had a KLSD came by and did an interview called Arden Water, well, they have a segment called Arden Water. And they interviewed Randy Edberg, Brian Keenick, who are our plant operators. And just this, just a real good, simple interview on why water was important, why they wanted to work in this field. Most of all, Randy, it was, you know, some of the history of some of the water projects and balance. So we can really get an article, maybe go for the KLSD. We do also have a police, another police, pardon me, it's a fireman's grant. It's called a FAST grant, Fire Manuals Grant, for $500,000. We voted to go ahead and apply for it last meeting. It's in process. The administrator, the grant administrator has gone up to bid and helped me up to bid, I believe it's two weeks in a row, is that right?
Just one.
Just one, okay. It only needs to be put up to bid one, one week. So we'll get those bids in, close it, and move forward with that so we can get the, well, we're trying for $500,000. The police department's putting together two pieces of equipment, or two trucks, I believe it is, and we need up to five pieces of equipment. So they're getting those together, they need some pricing, some quotations, current ones. So we're gonna proceed with that.
You told me you should fire an ambulance.
Fire an ambulance. So...
Which is running out of protection, it'd be the hospital.
Right, but some of the municipalities, they do the fire and ambulance out of the fire station.
Is that just a label you put on it?
That's what the grant is called, Fire Ambulance Grant. So, and that's what I'll be calling it through the life of this thing. Yeah, it's just that you get it.
It's just a glove, my money goes with it.
I'm trying to...
Tracing against you.
Yeah, I know, I know. Trying to get you used to the, to the new name of this. The volleyball, volleyball court was mentioned earlier. If you go to the park, you'll see that we dug out the washer pit area. Some of it was because we were gonna have to expand it. And we started looking at the trees and the area where the park board had originally looked at placing all of our court, where it had been inhibited by a tree. So we decided to put it exactly where the washer pit areas were. And we are gonna move the washer pits. So we had, we needed to increase the length. Because I believe if you get a certain amount of people planning these washer terminals, if you don't have enough, it kind of really draws out the terminal, you know, it could be three days. So anyway, we're trying to make the crew necessary to park. It's also, we'll have to buy some sand, but I think we have everything else. So we won't be expecting too much on that. And we need to get it complete about 30 June, 30 June, which is when they have their picnic in the park. So that's our deadline for that. We had a lockdown recently at the, at the high school. And I started inquiring as to if we had a text messaging system that would be able to send out emergency management messages to our citizens. And I was told that this had been talked about, was it 2016?
Two, three years ago. That's when we talked about Code Red and all that.
Right, so in 2016, this had already, this had been brought up, and Corey hooked up the minutes, this had been tabled back in 2016. I think Stan went out and he got new quotes.
Me and Corey did. I think Corey got one or two, I got, I should have a second one. I ended.
Come on, okay. What we're doing is looking at getting a system so we can install it. It wouldn't just be for emergency situations. It could be for, if we have a leak on Fifth Street, and we're gonna shut part of the road down, we can send that out to our citizens. If we're doing road construction on A Street and have to close it, we can send this message out to our citizens. It would also push emergency management messages, such as tornado warnings, severe thunderstorm warnings, you know, stuff that we kind of get anyway on some of our weather ads. And I think it also pushes anger words. But anyway, this would be a...
We just need a city manager app.
Well, see, I don't know if we can push messages out through that.
Yeah, you can.
I don't know, we need to talk to Corey. But what we're doing, we're not just looking at new software and new service, we're looking at every possibility, we're looking at apps as well. So I mean, we're just trying to figure out how the best way for the most reliable, you know.
I was just playing.
Keith, is the NISL the same one that San Angelo's using?
Yes.
What'd you say? You're piggybacking him, but what happens with the NISL is, in any emergency situation, if somebody's even traveling through the area, not a citizen here, it's gonna hit their cell phones, it's gonna hit the towers. So what it does, it hits the towers and it hits everybody in the emergency area, not just those that live here. So it's not just limited, you know, kind of like when you're traveling, you get the ambulance, it's on the same system.
Right.
Much better system than that.
We had Code Red in Broward, one policy here, a city manager for six months. And I mean, no sooner I got appointed, it was in May, and so it was storm season, and of course, I told our emergency manager coordinator, make sure we get, you know, make sure we type. It takes about an hour for a couple, once you activate Code Red, calls, you know, manually calls the phone that are in the system. So it takes about an hour for everybody to get the call, one, it can go through, and you know, if it doesn't pick up, recalls and all that. So anyway, long for short, he said, no, don't worry about it, the tornadoes are missing. And I said, well, just make sure you give plenty of notes. Well, lo and behold, he waited too long. And of course, I mean, next day, I got 300 calls. Anyway, he said, I get my call when the, you know, route was being literally blown away, or call came through, you know, you didn't have much more. So just, I've got a Code Red, I don't know if there's apps, or Corey's, I'm sure, much more depth, or whatever you can do. Because it took a while for Code Red to get the messages out, which was, to me, kind of a pain, you know, you know what, so.
I guess I didn't really ask, um, text for messages.
Yeah, because...
I mean, if you do, if you do landlines, I'm pretty sure it might take a while.
Yeah.
Landlines, but a lot of them are text messages and emails that automatically trickle out.
Well, and I think the biggest thing that I was really looking for was text messaging, because, you know, you could push those text messages out. And most people will hit them and at least look at them at some point in the day. So I think it'd be a effective tool to communicate with our citizens. But once we get all our bids together, take a look at which system we kind of like to look at, and get a bit of that together, and make a...
Why did we segment that in 2016?
Cost, we didn't have any numbers on what the cost of each individual was.
There was a three presentation, I mean, could we?
We had three, three presentations, and now Code Red and NISL was one, and there was another one, I don't remember the name.
Yeah. I can't remember the other names.
But we didn't have enough information for one, and we didn't have a cost on it. And just the ballpark on one of them was astronomical, though. That was kind of backed up on it.
Well, we'll get everything together, get a bit of that, and suggest a vendor when we come back. But I did want to mention, we were looking into that. So if anybody has any questions, talk to me about it later.
I mean, I think as long as we, it's not busy next council meeting, we should be ready to go then.
Okay. Okay, good, yeah.
We should have the quotes and everything.
Well, you guys are recorded, so now you gotta back that up.
You just gotta remember to put it on.
Did you know Captain was supposed to try?
Yes, he did. They were, Barry was here, and you said you were...
Cool. The only thing I got left here is, I believe Pat told us that the, he's gone through the charter, and we probably need to get that board back together so we can go through.
I mean, it's set up, and it'll be after the 14th, so just looking.
The 14th is on Tuesday.
He'll be sending it out before we leave?
Yeah, if we could, what about the week, the next week, what am I calling, 23rd, would that be open?
22nd?
Yes. That's a Wednesday.
Yes.
What time is it? About six?
Yeah. He'll send it to us, when will you send it to us?
I'll send it out by Sunday, hopefully for that.
So that's on, I bet, 22nd?
Yeah, 22nd.
Might be we have council meeting around?
Yes, we do, on the 20th.
20.
At 6:00. Did it? We still are working on the food truck ordinance. I know, Pat gave us a copy of San Angelo's and Seguin's, I believe. And I don't know if anybody's had time to go through those, but that still needs to be something we address at a later date. And we're still going, I've got a few revisions to make on the HR policy. And we're gonna come before you then, but again, at a later date. But we are still working on it.
He's pretty much ready to tip what he did, Jimmy.
Right, right. So other than that, I think we covered quite a bit in a short period of time.
So then food truck ordinance is, are you, didn't you ask us not too long ago to kind of table it for a little bit, so you got caught up?
Yeah, I wanted this charter done first, because I've gotten all the amendments and the charter, and now I gotta kind of simulate, try to, you know, I think what I thought we would do is, at this meeting, kind of go through all of the amendments, and then from that, we'll get kind of our presentation for the citizens. But we'll figure out which ones we want to do, I guess, and just go around. Because, you know, it's gonna be pretty voluminous. And I think, you know, we probably want to talk about strategy, about not overdoing it for the voters, and so that, I think that'll be kind of what our focus will be, is just which ones we want to actually present to the citizens at this first go. Primarily, the, you know, the city council manager, former government changes are gonna be, I think, the most important ones, then getting those things cleaned up, and getting the roles of the council, and the city manager hired out clearly.
Police department?
Yeah, police department, and fire marshal, those appointments. So those things, I think, are most important.
Counselor term.
Counselor term, if that's something you want to address too. That's one thing, if we do, if, and I'm not gonna change it in this go around, but if you go to, if you extend your term beyond two years, then you can no longer have, if some, if you've got a vacancy, an appointment to council, it's just, it's a constitutional requirement. So I'm gonna leave it, just so it's not confusing, my point is, I don't want to change it in our charter to do away with appointed, right now, where our charter says, if there's a vacancy, y'all can appoint those successful. And then if there's two, or one tied, say, you have to call a special election. Well, if we went to a three-year term, you would always have to call a special election to fill that term. That's what we have in Broward, we have four-year terms in Broward, so all I'm pointing out to you is, is I'm not gonna change it in this charter for this time, because the first one's the most important, and by law, it'd be kind of like what we have now, just be a provision we need to change at the next meeting of the next charter amendment, if that passes, because that's the first one, that's the most important. So...
So if you're meeting, you don't have special for the four years?
Any term longer than two years, you can't, you have to compromise, you no longer can have a council person appointed by the council.
So that's all I had. All right. All right, here are requests for future agenda, I'm a city council, is anything else you can be on future agenda, please?
Justin Byler.
Yes, Justin Byler, 5K run, the NISL for sure, I'd like to see those presentations. Anything else that we haven't had that we needed to?
Do we need to talk about that, that planning zoning, what was it that she brought up?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, yeah, I'll have to wait for next meeting, just at least your report on what you need to do, and I'll say, I just don't know of any way that PZ can do variance under the law, so I just, I gotta clarify, so if there's any questions.
All right, thank you everyone for coming in tonight, we're about to go to the executive session. Please have a good evening and a great week.